Is that, is that turned on?
No.
Oh, this, is it, okay.
You were thinking about making those things again, huh?
Those things.
If you don't want to see all that by yourself, if you don't want to cook it and eat all this up yourselves, please let us help you out.
Anytime.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We're gonna go ahead and start, call the meeting, the study session to order. And the one and only agenda item is the city manager's office, so we'll start with you, Larry.
Yes, Mayor Fitzgibbons, member of the council. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to present on the topic of our strategic plan. And so tonight, we ultimately will be presenting the work that we have concluded to this point, having discussion and ultimately receiving any feedback from the mayor and council. But I thought I would give a bit of a history to, for everyone that may be watching, so they understand what brought us to this point this evening. And I would start by giving a bit of an overview that eight years ago, the mayor and council at that time met and developed a strategic planning document for the organization with a, really what I would consider to be a five to eight year view, outward view. But our strategic planning efforts ultimately led to us having an annual revision of that, an annual review of that. And about every two years, we actually went through a revision process. But when we had three new council members come onto the council and obviously a new mayor, the thought was that we would essentially spend some time educating the council on the organization, which we did for a number of months. And then enter, and then have a budget retreat where the council could establish a new document. And so staff selected a consultant and the mayor and council met in a strategic planning retreat. Jody was there for at least a portion of that, so she got an opportunity to, to understand the format that we were, we were going to be striving for. But we did hire Lance Strategies, Nicole Lance, to come in and facilitate this two-day session where the mayor and council worked collectively with the executive leadership team to establish what, what in essence will be a new strategic plan for the upcoming years. And we started with the selection of key focus areas. Those key focus areas that were established were infrastructure and expansion, public safety, economic vitality, good governance, and community enhancement. From this particular point, we actually established a definition for each of these focus areas. And I'm not going to read every one of these, but they will, they are obviously available in the council packet. And, and ultimately can be reviewed by our residents to have an understanding of the definition. But I did want to stop at this particular slide this evening and just re-verify with the mayor and council. I know that when we left the retreat that day, that everybody seemed to be very, very comfortable with the key focus areas and the definitions. We have, staff has not made any changes in this particular area to, to these items. And so ultimately, I'd like to just get any feedback that council may have as we're moving this through a working draft document into a final document. Any questions or comments there?
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Okay, any questions, comments, go ahead.
I would just say thank you, Larry, and also to the staff for putting this on for us, to help us. I learned a lot, and I have to make mention of this individual who's in the room. I sit on the area with Kevin, and I learnt a lot in regards to streets and lights, timing, and things like that, which was very key. So I got a better understanding. So really do appreciate y'all taking the time out and helping us and educating us in regards to coming up with a game plan for our city with, including all of the council members, the mayor. So thank you.
Go ahead.
When you look at it, it looks pretty brief and simple, which I think was the point. It took, so everyone knows, it took a long time to get down to these key, key points, but I like it because it's easy for us to go back to, easy to reference. And then it goes into more detail as you, as you go down, which I'm sure you're going to after this. But I know it looks like not a whole lot to begin with, but it started out with a whole lot. And the idea was to boil it down to these main ideas so that we can focus on, you know, focus areas. And then relate all of our, you know, all of our positions, all of our.
Focus areas.
Yeah.
Objectives.
Back to this, yeah.
Yeah.
Good point. Any other comments, questions?
Perfect. Well, the council members certainly did set the stage for the next component of the dialogue. And to give everyone a context, a couple of the areas that I thought are reasons that I, that I felt very comfortable with the focus areas. And again, these are the 30,000 elevation foot items, elements that we are, that, that we will be allocating resources to. But what I found unique about these as we went through this is it really did align very nicely with the community survey that we had conducted back in February, where public safety, infrastructure, and quality of life were key elements of that. And I, and certainly those themes you will find throughout the document. And, and ultimately, you'll begin to, I, I hope that citizens can begin to see the link through the objectives and ultimately the action items that will, will transpire. So Stephen, if you want to go down to the next page. And, and Mayor Pro Tim Herman is absolutely right. It, we spent, we, you really begin to spend a fair amount of time focused on the, on establishing the objectives. And I hope that as we go through these, everyone understands the amount of time and consideration that we're given. Obviously, you can't have a million objectives. You really try to have anywhere between four or five objectives for each category. However, in some of these areas, for example, infrastructure are very first, it's very difficult because it's such a broad category. And so, but, and if I can, make sure that the mayor and council is aware that, that we, staff has made a few additions or amendments to these objectives. And in fact, tonight, I'm going to be asking council to consider some potential of essentially selecting one particular objective over another. But I thought I would go through these objectives as well for each, for each focus area. The objectives for infrastructure and expansion is to identify and improve four roadway intersections per year to a past level of service. Again, attempting to improve the efficiency in our roadway infrastructure. Increasing roadway lane mile capacity by adding two additional lane miles per year. You begin to see that the, the goal is to have expansion within our roadway infrastructure. And increase pavement conditions indexed by 3% over a five-year period. All three of those, the very, the three first objectives that were established, and Councilman Edwards spoke about the group that he was in. This was the group that he was in, and there was a fair amount of dialogue that transpired on that front. But you can see the heavy emphasis on transportation. And, and you, and ultimately, I think it's important to note that as we established our objectives, we were looking for objectives that, that can be measured, where we can come with data as we, as we ask council to make decisions and prioritize various projects. I think all three of these ideally are situated to allow that. Moving on to the wastewater enterprise or infrastructure. Reduce the H2S levels in our sewer mains. Increase wastewater collection infrastructure by adding 5% of new capacity annually. So you'll see the, the next two were actually focused on wastewater. The next one is focused on parks and recreation. Again, infrastructure is a very broad category. So ultimately, developing or improving one acre of new or existing park and recreation opportunities annually. And then we move into government facilities. Identify and improve or expand 5% of governmental buildings and facility space annually. And, and then the, the last two are two that I have added, that staff has added for your feedback on particularly. The first, the first seven were, were established during the budget, or during the strategic planning retreat. But it was, there were, there were some very clear messages that were delivered to us during that retreat. And one of those happens to, happened to be the timing of getting projects finalized and on a timely manner and within budget. And so I thought that would be a good objective to begin to measure that, so that we can actually report on that. So deliver 90% of the capital improvement projects on schedule and within 5% of what was budgeted is the proposed new addition to this list. And the last one is ensure that constituents are informed about the scope, timelines, and impacts of infrastructure projects. And I think it's important, if I can, before we get into specific discussion about those last two. The, it was, the second element that was very clear to me is that community engagement is something that we need to continue to improve. I think we've made some very strong strides the last two years in that particular, in those particular fronts. But additional work needs to be done. And so you'll find that there is some level of communication or community engagement components that are, that are listed as objectives in each of these. And with a heavy emphasis on good governance, I know that's ultimately where we ended up landing on, on, on objectives that would, would, related to communication and community engagement. And so again, I'll pause there, but get, ask for any feedback if you're comfortable with adding those last two objectives, or if that is something that you would prefer that we remove.
Questions, comments?
I'd just say, I, I like the two new added ones. You know, number nine could actually kind of fit in either one.
Right.
I definitely like number eight. I think I've said that before, so. So no, I, I appreciate you putting those in.
I agree.
I was gonna agree as well. I like them both, and they're, they're both could be universal to, to all areas and departments, so they're, they're good in here or elsewhere.
Bob stole mine, but that's perfect. But the one thing about the number nine I like is we've had some projects lately, and we've got some coming up. I think it'd be good to say this project is starting on this day, and we are anticipating to finish on this day because people say it's taking forever, you know?
Right.
But no, that's, that's how long the projects are gonna take, you know, so that we know what, what the anticipated timeline is of them. And I think we can do that pretty easily, so I'm really happy to see that.
To give the mayor and council a little bit of insight on, on that particular topic, and I, and, and obviously, again, that was clear, clearly communicated during the retreat, is we are establishing a community engagement plan that, that talks specifically about the approach to setting timelines, articulating those timelines with clear expectations, and ultimately reporting at the end. I'm not, we, we, over the, over the course of the last several years, I think the council and staff can certainly agree that we've gotten a lot of projects completed, and they come up when the council considers them. But I don't know that we celebrate the completion of those as well as we, we should, we should be doing. So again, you'll begin to see an additional effort being placed in, in that particular category.
And I'm in agreement as well with both eight and nine, and as has been stated already, they work hand in hand with a lot of things that we do. And I know we had a meeting before where we talked about having someone that's over that timeline and making sure, our supervisors, I think we talked about, in regards to make sure they stay on top of that timeline and them finishing like they say they are gonna finish. And also the impacts of all of that, the cost of it, and that we all are abreast to that. And so I'm in agreement with both of them as well.
Yeah, I also agree with everybody. There's not that much else I can say, I'm going last, so.
Well, and I just wanted to point out that, of course, I was happy to see that you did that because you, you really did listen to all of us. I mean, you can see we're all in agreement because these are messages that have been coming across. You know, people have been asking us about this information over and over and over and over. So it's just gonna help us answer those questions when we get it, you know, those, those brought to us. So, so I think all, and you know, for the staff that's here, it's not that Larry just put these in. It's just, I think all of us individually have been stressing the importance of these, you know, these particular, you know, objectives here. So, so no, I think it's great. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, Stephen, if you'll go into public safety. And I think you'll see with public safety that the objectives are, are fairly close to what the mayor and council had established that day. They're a little differently positioned into two particular elements that I felt were themes, for lack of better words, that were established as we were setting these objectives. And so, but because you have both, both police and fire in public safety, I thought it would be wise to, to articulate those in a category. So we ultimately ended up establishing emergency response efficiency, which I know is something that's very important from an operational perspective. But again, one of the common themes in messaging that we heard during the retreat was the community engagement and trust, right? Building that trust within, within the community. And so within those two categories, you'll see that decrease average response times for the 90th percentile of priority fire calls by 5% in five years. And ultimately, that one was slightly rewritten to the 90th percentile simply because when we do our benchmarking against other cities primarily in the valley, that is exactly the objective that they're measuring against. So I thought it would be wise for us to establish something similar and attempt to account for so that we can compare the improvements that we're making to other cities in, in, in Pinal County that participate, as well as the valley. The next item is decrease the average response times on priority calls for police by 5% within five years. And then finally, which is tied to our ambulance operation, achieve and maintain the ADH, ADHS. That's the Arizona Department of Health Services standard response time for medical calls annually. And essentially, I know the council talked a little bit about this during the retreat. But essentially, ADA, ADHS has a specific percentage of response times that we have to comply with in order to maintain our CON, and wanted to essentially measure against that and report on that annually to our community and to the council. Any questions on, any preference? Is, is the council okay with the framing of the objectives in these two categories or themes? And are you okay with the objectives specifically for response efficiencies?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Moving on to community engagement and trust. Annually achieve and maintain appropriate staffing levels relative to community needs. Increase community involvement and transparency by hosting at least three more community-involved events and/or initiatives a year for five years. And I think that the initiative component is the key element there. Obviously, both of our departments participate in a lot of community-type events. But I, I felt like this particular objective was more focused on programming or initiatives such as coffee with the cop, perhaps our bike patrols and the like. But this gives us, it really allows the, the staff to point towards an objective when they are proposing new programming or looking for the allocation of resources. So any, any comments on, on that particular category?
Questions, comment, okay.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to economic vitality. And you'll find that in economic vitality, the measurement components become a little bit more difficult to achieve. It's not, it's gonna be tough to capture data. But ultimately, what, what we landed on is increase the small business participation from 40 to 60 businesses at city-sponsored events. At city-sponsored events, it was a slight modification from what we created at the retreat simply because it, it allows us to better monitor and understand that data. So it's our business roundtables, it's our various events that we have for small business, for industrial, industrial and the like around the, around the community. The next item, which you'll have your first opportunity to make a decision on, or at least give me direction on tonight, thank you Brett. Item number two was develop, the, the original objective was increase the number of direct hires from Casa Grande programs from blank to blank in five years. And ultimately, what we were attempting to do with that particular objective is to encourage our local businesses, our local industries to hire our local graduates from Casa Grande. As we began to really try to dissect that, we felt that it may be very difficult for us to capture the data and to understand whether or not these industries or these employers were hiring Casa Grande graduates. And so the option that we've put together for council to evaluate tonight is develop a program to encourage business, businesses to hire local high school graduates. So it becomes more program-based than it does really a tracking tool, if you will. So any, any preference on that from the council's perspective? I, I think it, it attempts to achieve the same outcome.
Right.
But ultimately, it, it, in my mind, it looks a lot like the internship program that we built a couple of years ago for the city, where it becomes more of a program base, and then we encourage people to share data with us that we can ultimately articulate some of the success stories that we've had.
Is that good? Go ahead, man.
Real quick, thanks for getting the small businesses in here, which I know is a big thing for some of us. Also, maybe partner with the chamber on that?
Yes.
You know, to help get that, that objective moved along and to help measure maybe the.
Yes.
You know, even host an event or something, or some type of hiring.
Right.
Which you guys already, we already do. But I like, yeah, just so, we can't say measured if we really can.
Right.
Yeah, right. Sure, Bob.
Is, is it still gonna be pretty hard to capture the end result? How, how many are we talking about out there?
Yeah, I think it's, I, Councilmember Huddleston, I, I think it's gonna be very difficult for us to have data that we can rely on to make management decisions, I guess is how I would frame that. But ultimately, the thought about moving to a program base, it becomes more about articulating success stories from people that ultimately are willing to share the, the hard data versus saying we're trying to understand what everybody is doing in the community.
I was, I was gonna say, it doesn't have to go in here, but, but maybe include a survey tool as part of that program so that we get, we get somewhat of a report for this year, and then next year, we get a similar report from the survey.
Sure.
Also, we're looking at measurables, trying to figure out measurables. And I know the high schools, because we're talking about the high school students too, and trying to find, figure out. Clubs like DECA, they, they help get those students, and they have to get the students within those jobs. And if we can get some of that information from those different programs at our high schools, that would also help us, I guess, with measurables too, because I know DECA was big for me with Miss Ju and getting job placements. I worked at all the grocery stores in town. And so, but anyways, they have that information that you can get from the schools as well.
And if we had someone ma, kind of managing it, and they can do the outreach to the different companies, even though a lot of companies, everything's online, and they might be hired at their national headquarters, and, you know, so how can they track, you know? But, but, you know, if someone's managing the program, they can try to come up with something or reach out to local businesses. So, okay.
Okay.
No, it's definitely better than, I mean, it's probably gonna be a little, little bit easier to track than the.
Well, and I, and, and a couple of the comments that have been made tonight are certainly action items that the council will begin to see as part of the next adification of, of the document. And I think you'll, you'll see that that's exactly the, the path that we're planning on going down. The next couple is increase efforts to bring the high, the number of high-quality slash payer jobs above the median household income by 1,000 in the next five years. So essentially, that is just tracking, again, we are asking some of these employers for data. But, but we're, we're going to measure that against the median household income versus a fixed rate. Like we, in the retreat, we had picked $65,000 as the threshold, so we, we changed it to the median household income. That is, that is a specific measurement that other entities are using. Evaluate processes to make it easier to do business in Casa Grande. Again, something that's not necessarily measurable, but certainly something that we can do survey work on to, to evaluate that. And expand housing stock by adding new and diverse dwelling options. And I think it's important to note that we've, I, there was a fair amount of dialogue. This, to me, is more focused on ensuring that we are understanding our housing market, our housing diversity. Certainly not in, focused on any one particular housing type. But some of the ideas that have been expressed as townhouses and condos and the like. So I think you'll see some, some specific action items focused on those items. Any comments or questions on economic vitality? If not, we'll move on to good governance, which is a new focus area, something that is, that, that is really much different than we had in our last strategic plan. But as, as far as good governments, governance is concerned, we really focused on building relationships with our residents, our financial wherewithal, and, and our communication. So you'll, I'll just go through these very quickly. Build trust and relationship, increase participation, and strengthen social cohesion through communications with constituents. You see the theme that I talked about a minute ago. Increase meaningful community participation in the governance process. Increase legislative advocacy for Casa Grande. I know that was a topic that was well discussed by the elected body. Ensure sustainable financial management and budgeting. Enhance and expand service delivery through data-driven decision-making and innovation. And develop and retain high-quality workforce. So again, somewhat of a broad category that covers a number, but I think that, that the work that was done, we did add, enhance, and expand service delivery through data-driven decision-making and innovation. And, and really, the intent behind that is that we've had some action items where we are measuring the, the performance of various programs and services we provide many times against the private industry. And I thought that that better captured the objective, and then we can create new action items around that. Any thoughts on good governance? And our final is community enhancement, which is really, there's, there was a theme about building valued education and strong families into our community, and really instilling civic pride. And, and so you'll see that there are some specific objectives that are, that focus on that as well as the beautification of our community. Increase resident participation in city-sponsored events and programs by 10% within five years. Again, we've seen good turnout to a number of our events lately, but we, we want to expand that. Increase the percentages of citizens who feel adequately informed and educated about city issues by 10% in, in five years. Again, this is the communication link that likely will, the data will have to be captured by survey. Increase awareness of organizational programs and services by 10%. Same applies there. Expand community activities and events by 5% over five years. And increase civic pride by implementing, implementing a minimum of three separate community beautification initiatives annually. So those are going to be specific initiatives that we likely will be budgeting for, that we can articulate at the, at, at the beginning or during our budget process and allocate resources to. resources to. So I don't, if you have specific questions on this particular focus area, certainly happy to entertain those tonight. I do want everybody to know that really the, the meat comes at the next step, which is the action items that really focus on how we are going to allocate our, our expenditures in our, in our budget process. Staff did work that afternoon collectively to develop several, and I've added a few more to that. And I've also been expanding some of the action items to ultimately incorporate many of the initiatives that we've been working on this, these last couple of years. I think it's important for council to see that. But I wanted to secure these items this evening so that we can finalize that action item, at least the draft version of that, get that next document out to the council for your review and consideration. And ultimately, I envision that we can be asking council to adopt the, this particular document as completed, some, either the second meeting in December or the first meeting in January, if council's comfortable with that. But there, there will be a lot more reading on the action items, I can tell you that. It, it is going to be somewhat focused on fiscal year '27, our next budget year, but we are beginning to add items that might be in future years, two or three years out. And and we'll ultimately come back and put timelines together on that once we get, once we get to the next step. But wanted an opportunity to get this back to the council to make sure you knew that we're advancing it. And I'll pause for any other questions.
Any questions? Any more comments?
Nope.
Nope? Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you. And, and again, thank you to the council members for taking the time. I mean, this strategic plan is definitely different. I mean, I think there's, you know, a lot of changes than our previous one, but, and to all the staff, everyone that's here tonight, I hope you see the importance of it and how it's going to help us as we move forward in, in a, you know, direction, organized, in an organized manner. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I guess we'll go ahead and close the study session. And you want to pause? Does anyone need to? I guess we have one minute, two minutes. Does anyone have to go to the restroom? Do you wanna wait five minutes? Are you okay? Okay, we'll just pause for a couple of minutes then Larry.
Okay.
And start the regular meeting.